Anderson when we get to that point in the agenda. The board will accept comments by its telephone or video during the public hearing for case two dash 2020. Anderson, we ask that our all participants mute their phones and only unmute is speaking. If you're going to speak each time you speak, please state your name and address. It is also helpful to speak directly into your phone as opposed to using the speaker feature. At each of our board meetings, we encourage attendees to complete a sign in sheet, including their name and address. If at some point during or after the meeting, if you would like to electronically sign in, simply send an email to S Donovan, D O N O V A N at Anderson Township dot O R G. And that is again, S Donovan, D O N O V A N at Anderson Township, one word, dot O R G. Before the meeting begins, I would like to identify the appointed zoning commissioners that are participating in this meeting, including myself, Jonathan Gothard, chairperson, Jay Lewis, vice chair, Anne McBride, Brian Eliff, and Ben Henson. Other personnel joining the meeting are representative of Anderson Township, Mr. Paul Drury, director of planning and zoning, and Ms. Sarah Donovan, planner one. Each of us will do our best to remember to state our names before beginning to speak so that those joining us by phone can follow along. We thank you for joining us and appreciate your patience and understanding me during these unprecedented times. At that, we will look at the agenda and see if anyone has any changes to the agenda. If not, approval of the agenda as submitted. So may I have any comments on the agenda from the commission members?
Then this is Ben. I'll make a motion to approve.
And this is Ian. I'll second that motion.
Okay. Ms. Donovan, would you like to call roll, please?
Mr. Henson.
Present.
Mr. Eliff.
Hi.
Ms. McBride.
Yes.
Mr. Lewis.
Yes.
Mr. Gothard.
Yes. Thank you, Ms. Donovan. Next on the agenda is the approval of minutes for December 16th, 2019. It looks like we do have four of the members that attended that meeting to approve the agenda. So with that, would any commission member like to approve the agenda as submitted or make any corrections or changes to the agenda?
Mr. Gothard, this is Brian. I just had a question for Paul on the first paragraph under the case caption where it starts with Mr. Drury. It says it's zone B as in boy, P U D. Just confirming that is a, is that correct?
So this is on the December minutes under case five, 2016?
Yes.
Oh, I'm sorry. Under the first paragraph.
Yeah, work with your name there, Paul.
Yes, that is correct.
Okay. Thank you. That's all I had. Thanks.
Okay. Any other commission members? Hearing none. If someone would like to make a motion to approve the minutes as presented?
This is Brian. I'll make the motion to approve the December 16th, 2019 minutes.
Thank you. Could I have a second, please?
This is Jay. I'll second.
Thank you. Ms. Donovan, could you call roll, please?
Mr. Henson.
Yes.
Mr. Eliff.
Yes.
Ms. McBride.
Yes.
Mr. Lewis.
Yes.
Mr. Gothard.
Yes. And I believe, Mr. Henson, you should probably abstain.
Because I wasn't present at the meeting?
Correct.
Sounds good to me.
Okay.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda is the approval of the minutes, February 24th, 2020. Any comments from the commission members that were present?
Mr. Gothard, this is Brian again. I did have a couple corrections on this one that I wanted to share with Paul and Sarah, make sure they agree. It starts on page 14. The third paragraph that starts Mr. Eliff. Let me know when you're there.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay. So it says, first sentence says, Mr. Eliff asked clearly what they, what it should say is, Mr. Eliff asked to clarify. So change clearly to clarify.
Okay.
And then if you drop down to the next paragraph where Randy Merrill was speaking, the third line up from the bottom, the sentence started, he added that the density is less than. Let me know when you find that.
Yes.
So add a, add an S on less.
Okay.
And then I just have a couple more real quick. If you flip to the next page, 15, where you go down to where Mr. Ucharelli was speaking, you start at the bottom of his paragraph and go up one, two, four lines. And it says, he added that that this should be a this, it should be a discussed. It should say, this should be discussed before we also take out A and change discuss to discussed. Okay. And then the last thing is, if you go down to that where I'm speaking at the bottom, it starts Mr. Eliff. Go down to the third sentence that says, Mr. Eliff replied that he needs to research this. What it should say is, Mr. Eliff replied that Mr. Ucharelli needs to research this, not that Mr. Eliff needs to research that. And it says, because there is no ground for notification to notify. What it should say is, because there is no requirement to notify lesses. Because there is no requirement to notify lesses.
Okay.
That sound good? That's all I had.
Yes.
Is there anything? Okay.
Looks very good otherwise.
Thank you, Mr. Eliff. Any other commission members present have any other amendments to the agenda? Or I'm sorry, for the amendments from February 24th? Hearing none. If we could have somebody make a motion for approval as amended?
This is Brian. I'll move to approve the February 24th minutes as amended.
Thank you. Could we have a second?
I'll second that. This is Anne.
All right. Thank you. Ms. Donovan, could you call roll, please?
Mr. Henson. Mr. Henson.
Yes.
Mr. Eliff.
Yes.
Ms. McBride.
Yes.
Mr. Lewis.
I'm staying.
Mr. Gothard.
I'm staying. Thank you all. This is John Gothard. Mr. Drury, could you please present case two dash 2020, Anderson?
Thank you. The applicant is Mark Walker of Walker and Associates on behalf of B E E Holdings Limited Partnership, who is the property owner. This is a continuation request is a zone change. The original zone change was from AA, which is single family with the minimum lot size of one acre to A2 was the original zone case, zone change request. And this was continued in February with the request from the zoning commission to either resubmit as a plan unit development or a community unit plan. And staff encouraged and the applicant agreed to request a community unit plan. So the request tonight changed the zoning from a single family to single family C U P, which is community unit plan. The proposal, the number of lots is still the same as in February. 12 lot, single family residents, three of, or I'm sorry, 11 of those are buildable and one is reserved for detention. A minimum lot area of point 363 acres and an average lot area of point 411 acres. The net density, the proposed net density is 22,366 square feet per buildable lot. We can go to the next slide, please. So these are the changes from the last time. This was before the zoning commission. The lot size, the ranges, minimum of 15,800 square feet to 23,000 square feet. The lot width is proposed at 90 feet where 100 feet is required in the A2 zoning, I'm sorry, the district. Lots five and six, these are in the cul-de-sac, they're the pie shaped lots. So they measure at 85 feet width at the building window. A front yard setback is proposed at 40 feet where 50 feet is required. The sides in the rear setback side is requested at 15 feet, which is the standard for the A zoning district. And the rear yard setback is proposed, which is the standard for the A residence, single family residence issue. Next slide, please. A little bit on the site history, and we won't go through this too much detail since we covered this at the last meeting. But the current owner of the property purchased it in 2018. The previous use of the property was a church with a parsonage and the church building has since been demolished. The parsonage is still on the site and is being used as a residence. Next, next slide, please. A pre- and middle meeting for this case was held July of 2019. It was originally heard at regional planning, February, and then before our zoning commission late in February, February the 24th, and this was the meeting that the zoning commission continued the case. It was scheduled to be heard in March, but with the COVID-19, we did have to postpone the meeting until the governor passed legislation that we could hold this meeting virtually. Agency reports, a couple of updates from our February meeting. There was a question on water and sewer. The site serviced through Claremont Water and received a letter from, via email, that there was capacity for a new subdivision. Same with the sewer. There is an agreement with Metropolitan Sewer District, the Claremont County Sewer Services, this site, and there is capacity. So that is an update from the last meeting. There was a question of whether there was capacity for water and sewer. It has remained the same since the last meeting. This is an aerial map of the site. Again, the previous use was a church and parsonage with the parking lot there in the middle of the aerial parking lot still there. There are surrounding uses. This does abide Claremont County, Union Township to the east. The surrounding uses though are all single family, both Claremont County as well as Anderson Township. This is the zoning map. All of the surrounding zoning in the township is a single family, which is a minimum of one acre lots. This is in Union Township, which is the nine yellow highlighted area is R1. And the R1 zoning district in Union Township has required fall in between AA and A2 and Anderson. Next slide, please. The future land use map from our comprehensive plan identifies the area for single. Next slide. Next slide, existing features. This is a slide of the existing drainage. Slope toward the east and into the existing drainage in here. Next slide, please. This is a preliminary plat plan. Again, 11 buildable lots, 12 total lots. The one is reserved for the detention area, and that's lot number seven. Next slide, please. This has a little bit more color, a little easier to read. The applicant is proposing a buffer around the perimeter of the property to help screen the new homes from existing homes. As you can see in lot seven, that is the lot reserved for detention. And there is a proposed sidewalk internal circulation for sidewalk as well as a sidewalk proposed on Mount Carmel Road. This particular slide does not show that the applicant has resubmitted a plan addressing sidewalk. Next slide, please. So these are some of the site photos that we showed in February. This is from the looking back toward Mount Carmel Road to the west. You can see the single family homes across the street. The proposed street for this subdivision would fall in line in between those existing homes on Mount. Next slide, please. This is looking in the opposite direction toward the east. Just for sure at the back of the parking lot. The homes in the, in the, you can barely see there in the distance, those are homes in Claremont County. Slide, please. Well, we may not get to, there it goes. So this is looking north. The garage that you see is on the adjacent property to the north. Next slide. This is looking south along Mount Carmel, Mount Carmel Road. Next slide. This is looking north in the opposite direction. Next slide. Again, looking opposite the street to the west, this is the general location of where the proposed street would access onto Mount Carmel. Next slide. So staff findings, again, at the last meeting, zoning commission had concerns while the applicant was proposing to the, there was no guarantee because it was straight zoning is what the applicant was requesting during the zone change. So the concern of the zoning commission was, again, there was no guarantee for that density in that particular development. So we looked at the community unit plan. We also looked at the P U D. Staff didn't feel that there were features on the property to meet a P U D standard. On the property, you know, topography issues or floodplain or anything of that nature. So we felt that a community unit plan was appropriate in this particular, in this particular development. It did guarantee the density. It does allow condition placed on the zone change. And a final development plan is tied, if the zoning commission were to approve this, the final development plan is tied to the zone change. So what is proposed is what is constructed. The applicant did make efforts as well to increase the side yard setbacks as well as the rear yard setbacks to be consistent with the A zoning district. So the two deviations, one is the front yard setback and the other is the lot width. So those are the deviations. The overall net density is consistent with what you would find in an A zoning district. And while the surrounding properties are zoned AA, many of them are non-compliant to the existing zoning. They're non-conforming. Many of those do not contain acre. There are some properties that do have one acre, but there are many that do not. Not only in Anderson Township, but also in Union Township. So we felt that an A going from AA to A is still consistent with the surrounding area. We'll go to the next slide, please. We won't go through all the applicable items because we did this at the last meeting, but we do feel that it is consistent with the comprehensive plan with the housing and neighborhoods chapter, land use and development. Next slide, please. The zoning resolution, we've covered that, the Anderson trap. All sides of the street interior and then a sidewalk along Mount Carmel Road. And again, this was supported by the economic development. Next slide, please. So staff's recommendation approval based on some of the items that we just went over. Next slide. There were recommending conditions, three of those, and those have actually been addressed. Once the applicant received the staff report, they were able to modify their plan to these conditions. And I believe are in agreement with the conditions. We didn't include that site plan into the PowerPoint because our packets had already gone out to the zoning commission members. But a sidewalk now is being identified on Mount Carmel Road. A variety of trees as well as a modification of label on lot seven to identify open space detention area parcel and not a buildable lot. So I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Drury. This is John. I do want to state that, you know, I was not in attendance at the previous meeting for this case, but I have reviewed the video that is online, so I can speak to that. So with this, I'd like to see if Mr. Lewis has any questions of staff. And Mr. Lewis, if you could make a statement about your attendance at the previous meeting also.
Thanks, Jonathan. I was not in attendance, but I have reviewed the video along with a lot of other Netflix shows over the last month. Staff or Paul, can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you.
Okay. Although the homes in the property will be in Anderson Township, the development will allow Claremont County for certain utilities. Are there any other approvals or administrative hurdles that this has to go through with Claremont County other than they just saying they have capacity?
The subdivision process will still be with Hamilton County through Regional Planning Commission. So if the zoning is changed, the next step would be to go through the subdivision approval process through Hamilton County. Through that process is when the utilities will be addressed during the subdivision review process. Similar to this, they, the county routes, you know, subdivision plan to all the various utility agencies and the other agencies that would be reviewing for their comment. But the subdivision process would be approved through Hamilton County Regional Planning.
Okay. I had no other questions for staff.
Thank you, Mr. Lewis. Ms. McBride, any questions of staff?
Technology challenged here. No, I don't have any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Eliff, any questions of staff?
No, they, they answered the one question I had about the utilities available, so I'm good. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Henson, any questions of staff?
Paul, just to confirm with this being the C U P, it does require a site plan approval and hence prevents any modifications, well, not then modifications, but any modifications would have to be subject to subsequent review.
That, that is correct. If there were modifications from the final development plan, it would require public hearings depending on the level of modification, whether it was zoning commission only or it could be, you know, a review through the entire process, just like every substantial modification.
Right. Thank you. That was the only clarification I had.
Thank you. With that, I believe we will turn it over to the applicant to present their case. And if you could still state your name, address, and affiliation to the case, that would be beneficial. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Zach Peterson. I am here to represent the applicant this evening. My address is 4229 Round Bottom Road, Cincinnati, Ohio, 45244. Also with me, and he can chime in particularly on the more technical aspects of the development, is Mark Walker, who's an engineer and who compiled the plans that you guys have been looking at and the staff has reviewed. Mark and I are not in the same room for social distancing rules, but he is part of the call tonight. And Mark, if you have something to say or I forgot something, please don't hesitate to interrupt me.
Sure.
I want to, I'll keep our presentation brief. I think that between staff and between the, the members of the zoning commission, you guys have pretty much addressed everything really that there is to address. And so I don't want to take up too much of your time. I thank you guys all for doing this. I know it's all sort of a learning experience for all of us. From the applicant's perspective, I think that we hopefully feel that, that we've addressed all the concerns that, that people may have. Nearly a year ago now, or coming up on a year, 10 months or so, we had an open house with the public. The big issues that we heard from the public at that, at that point were density and screening and water. And so we removed a lot. We, the development is much less dense than we originally proposed it. We now have a lot that is designed purely for detention, lot number seven. Two, two staff's recommendations, we did submit some new plans. They're not here now. We just did it. We removed the label on lot seven and we let that parcel as an open space and detention area. Along the north side of the property, so going down Mount Carmel Hill, we have a berm there and actually the whole property is burned. We did, we did change our plans to add some different types of trees. We had initially proposed Norway spruces. The nice thing about Norway spruce is that even in the winter, when most of the trees don't have leaves on them and you lose some of that foliage, it gives you good screening, the Norways are type of evergreen. So you'll always have that. We did, consistent with the staff's recommendation, sort of add some variety to that. And then the other thing that's not shown on this plan, but we have revised and sent plans in, is, is to show sidewalks allow along Mount Carmel, allow Mount Carmel Road. We then met with Hamilton County and Hamilton County approved it, to use Paul's words, when it was a straight zone change. When we met with the zoning commission in the hearing in February, there was some concern. I think there's been some concerns sort of indirectly stated here about, hey, what if we sold the property and a new owner and they wanted a more dense development than what we had planned on? Or what if we changed our minds and we tried to squeeze another house in there, something like that? And so I think that my understanding is that was the impetus for the change from a straight zone change to the C U P plan. And we've done that in an effort to meet any of those concerns about the things changing. And overall, the, the density of the proposed development is very consistent, as staff note, with the surrounding property. We have sort of fixed the, the current water issue on the property right now. I wouldn't call it a major issue, but right now there is a slight slope to the east. And so when you have heavy storms, you get a decent amount of water that goes east into the Union Township properties. That water right now flows as it falls, as the engineers say. And so what we have done is we've added a lot seven on the back of that development as a detention lot. And so we will be able to control the flow of that water onto the Union Township properties far better than what, what it is doing now. And so the people from Union Township, I don't know if any of them are, were present in February or are on this call tonight, but there should be an alleviation of some of the water issues that have gone on back there. But overall, I, for the most part, I'm just going to defer, defer to the staff report. I mean, I think it captures everything. I think it's consistent with what the Hamilton County Regional Center, Planning Center folks said. I, I think the development is, is consistent with surrounding use. I think it's going to be a, a great addition to Anderson Township. And we look forward to working with you guys and getting this development off the ground. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer any or Mark would be happy to answer any. But again, we thank you guys for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Peterson. This is John again. Mr. Henson, do you have any questions of the applicant?
No, I don't. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Ellis, any questions of the applicant?
Just one, and that is for Mr. Peterson. When we met last month, I think Brookstone was with us or you indicated Brookstone is going to be the builder. Are, are they still the builder and are they going to be the exclusive builder? And who, if not, who's going to be building the houses in there, if you know?
Those are great questions. It is still our intention to use Brookstone Homes as the builder. We have not executed a formal contract yet, but we've certainly had discussions with them about building the homes. It would be an exclusive if, if we move forward with Brookstone, which we probably will. It would be an exclusive development for them. So I believe some of the zoning commission members were familiar with the development on Church Street that Brookstone did a couple of years ago and is still ongoing right now. Those are decent comparisons in terms of houses. But yeah, we want to use a reputable builder. We don't want to use a builder that's had problems in the past. We don't want to use a builder that puts up shoddy workmanship or anything like that. So it, it is probably going to be Brookstone. We've had a couple of conversations with Drees, but right now it's looking like it should be Brookstone.
Thank you very much. That's all my questions.
Thank you, Mr. Ellis. Ms. McBride, any questions of the applicant?
Yeah. Can you explain to me, because we, we aren't getting to see the revised landscape plan? So switched out, provided a greater variety of plant material. So what specifically are you proposing then in addition to the Norway spruce?
Mark, I know you submitted that updated plan after you and I talked. Do, do you recall what specific variety of plants we had in there in addition to the Norways?
Yeah. What we did was added a note that said that there was going to be a variety of trees and it was going to be designed by a landscape architect and approved at the time of the final development plan. So it would be subject to review then.
And Paul, then will we see that final development plan or is that staff review only?
Designing Commission would review the final development plan with this zone change, yes.
I think that was the only question that, that I had. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. McBride. Mr. Lewis, any questions of the applicant?
No questions at this time.
Thank you. I have a one question. It was noted that there was going to be a sidewalk or there is a sidewalk add along Mount Carmel Tabasco Road or Mount Carmel Road. What's the width of that and does it follow the property line or is it other sort of configuration?
Yeah, typically that, what, what I've proposed right now is a four foot wide walk and that's typical. And yes, it would follow. It's just inside the right of way. So the, the outside edge of the walk is, is right along the right of way line.
Okay. And Mr. Peterson had noted that there was going to be birmingham along Mount Carmel Road also is the sidewalk between the roadway and the berm or?
I don't think we're showing birmingham on Mount Carmel Road at this time. We do show some screening up there. And we could potentially do some birmingham. But, but to be honest with you, the, the final grading hasn't been worked out yet.
That would be shown on the final development plan, correct?
Yeah. Yeah, but we did.
That's the only question I had. With that, anything else the applicant would like to present to the commission?
No, I think that, that does it. We appreciate you guys' time and we're happy to answer any of the questions that come up.
Okay. With that discussion amongst the commission members? Mr. Gotthard, start with you. Yes.
Mr. Gotthard, this is Paul. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. It's a public comment and questions. We did accept email comments up to an hour before the meeting. And we received one, it was from Mrs. Schlaudecker, who I believe is also on the meeting as well. So I will let her present her case or her comments or questions. She wants me to read them, but we are accepting public comments tonight. We do just ask that, you know, go one at a time as best as possible. And then just please state your name and address for the running commission.
Thank you. So with that, is there anyone that would like to speak in favor of the, the application?
I have some questions for the applicants. I sent them to, this is Janelle Schlaudecker. My property abuts this development completely. And I, there were a lot of people who were talking about Union Township, but I'm Anderson Township. I'm not Union. Half of my property is in Claremont and the other half is in Anderson. I sent Ms. Donovan some questions about the detention pond. She could perhaps read them because I don't have a copy in front of me. I'd appreciate if you guys could answer those for me.
Okay.
Do you have those?
Yes, I'd be happy to read those. So Ms. Schlaudecker is an abutting property owner at eighty-six seventy-nine Apple Blossom Road. These are, one, this is a single family home subdivision residential area. The detention pond will butt my property. We have minor children as well as several of the other neighbors. This detention pond in a residential area equates high risk cause for unattended children. Is there a concept or preliminary design for the detention pond? For two, what about outlets? They pose a particular risk and merit special attention. Will it be an open unprotected pipe? How close to my property will the outlet be? Number three, is there a protocol or plan in place to minimize risks to neighboring residents and their families? Under the, adjacent use of property is not compatible with the detention pond. It is a residential area of single family homes. Will steps be to minimize risk? Will there be signs posted warning myself and neighbors of rapidly rising waters and associated danger be posted? Number four, mosquito control, will this be addressed? Number five, will the drainage system be completed prior to developing the homes? Excess water from the altered drainage will likely carry mud, rocks, and other debris onto my property. I am familiar with recent Ohio Supreme Court rulings about reasonable use. In one particular ruling, the court found a processor cannot alter the flow of water at a detriment to others. My property abuts directly to this development. Those are the questions.
Okay. Yeah, hi, this is Mark Walker and I will attempt to go through those one by one, if that is okay.
That would be fantastic. Thank you.
Okay. Okay. So the first question I think was, was there a preliminary design? And the answer is yes, there is. Right now it is all contained within lot seven. It outlets about the middle of the property to the east, which I'm sure is Ms. Flower and Decker's property. And there's an existing swale there that, that handles the water, most, all of the water that comes off of the site now ends up in that swale. And we're really not altering any of the flow direction. We're just capturing it before it leaves our site, detaining it and then releasing at a controlled rate. So our outlet will probably be about 10 feet away from the property line. And we do that, we, we hold it away from the property line in order to put in some flow control devices, sometimes rock channel protection, sometimes other devices that slow the water down as it leaves the basin. And so it will be with, it will be within 10 feet or probably about 10 feet away. It seemed to be quite a bit of concern about the safety of the basin. There's, what I've tried to do, I, I knew, I thought that was going to be a concern from the original meetings way back when. So I tried to create a basin that was big and shallow so that there was not water that people could drown in. So this particular basin is going to be have a maximum depth of two feet. So worst case, it's going to be two feet deep. And other than that, the controls on it are, are subject to the Hamilton County requirements. And we're, we're kind of locked into what they want us to do. I, I can't make it any safer than controlling the depth. So I've made it as, as, as shallow as I could in order to alleviate some of those concerns. Mosquitoes, I don't think will be an issue. As long as the bottom of the basin is properly sloped, there shouldn't be any standing water in it between rain events. So it'll, we'll get a rain event, it'll fill up, we'll collect the water, it'll release the water slowly. And then as the water drains down, we won't have any water standing in it when it's all finished. Next question was, will it be done before the, oh, I'm sorry? Okay. So the next question was, will it be done before the homes are completed? And I, I, I think there's a concern there about some stormwater pollution from runoff from the site. And that will absolutely be done before the homes. One of the things what we will do as part of our stormwater pollution prevention plan will be to create a, a temporary basin in the same location that, that collects all of the runoff from the site, holds it, and then lets the, the material that's, that's trying to run off the site settle out and then we'll release the top, you know, the top portion of the water, we'll let that go out at a controlled rate. So as to keep all the silt and the muck and everything within, contained within our construction site. And then I, I think there was one more, but I can't, I, I ran out of time writing. So I'm not sure what the last one was.
This is Paul again. I think that you had addressed all of them, but if there's anything else she had questions regarding.
Okay. Sure.
Yeah. So I guess the thing that I'm unhappy about is that, that you're talking about taking that acres that has a natural drain with the grass that's currently there. And there is, yes, there is a, a parking lot, but that will be eliminated. And the concern is that all of that runoff, I get to inherit on my property. That drainage pipe will be on, close to my property. The detention pond is going to run a butt to my property and all of that runoff is going to go into my backyard. So not only I get to inherit all the water from this development and all the pollutants and everything else that happens to be traveling down there. I have a lot of trees back there, a lot of walnut, black walnut trees. I have a lot of oak trees. I really don't know if there's any plans for erosion control. I have kids. I'm just, I'm not in agreement with it. I know a detention pond is a lot cheaper than a, than a retention pond, but I think it's kind of like out of sight, out of mind. We put it in the back of the development, the water runoff into the neighbor's yard and, you know, we can go about our business. And I just don't agree with it. I bought the property after I got home from Afghanistan because it was a large lot. It was private, it was quiet. And I really don't want to have to worry about my kids in the backyard, my dog in the backyard. And I just don't agree with the idea. I don't know why a, a retention pond wasn't considered. I know they're more expensive, but it just seems like, as in with my questions, that I'm going to inherit most of the, of the runoff and whatever else comes from the property on the mine. And that doesn't seem reasonable to me. And I just kind of want to add, my property is not Union Township. It's Anderson Township. So I just kind of want to add that for the record, along with my questions.
I, I would like to add that we did consider a retention pond, but as far as, as far as flow to your site, the difference in outflow between a retention pond and a detention pond is zero. The only difference between the two is whether or not the pond holds water prior to a rain event. The same amount of water falls on the site and goes off the site as a retention or detention pond. So I'm not sure what the, what the advantage to a retention pond would be, other than it's prettier.
Well, it's prettier and I think that the flow of, of water and the force of water is, is a little bit different.
Well, that's just incorrect. It's the same.
Okay. Again, I haven't seen those plans. I haven't seen that proposal for either a detention pond or a retention pond. But I know my stance with that is that it just seems like an undue amount of, of drainage is going to end up on my property. That's my, that's my view on that. And there's no creek there. It's a natural flow of these two or three, four houses back here where the, where the ground slopes and the water has formulated. There's no creek, there's no swale. It's just where the water has gone. And now it's going to inherit more at my expense. So I just wanted to end with that.
Mr. Walker, this is John Gotthard. Could you relate as far as redevelopment flow, the current flow that discharges off the property and the proposed flow as far as volume?
Yeah, so there's a range. So, you know, depending on the, the level of storm event, the existing rate from the site is anywhere from four CFS cubic feet per second to eight CFS. And under, under the proposed flow rates from our site, it caps at five CFS. So we're actually reducing the runoff from the site. And, you know, I walked back there, I've, I surveyed the whole site personally. I, I walked back there. There is a, a defined swale. It's, it's there. It handles all the existing water that comes off the site now, not just from our site, but from this, you know, from the surrounding areas too. And I mean, it's, it's, in some places, right off the site, it's, it's three to four feet deep. So it, to say that there's no swale is just, in my opinion, is, is not the way it is out there.
That's not correct. There's no three to four feet of water anywhere back there.
I didn't say three to four feet of water. I said three to four feet of depth for the swale.
I can walk you back there right now. Because I'm home.
Okay. So, yeah, I mean, you know, I want to just kind of go back to the facts as far as the duration of flow. Do you have any indication of how long the detention is going to flow for maybe a 50 year storm or a typical storm that you could share with us, Mr. Walker?
Yeah. A typical storm, a typical storm will, will, will be, have the basin empty probably within four to six hours, with the exception of, of about a foot of the, of volume at the lowest level that is required by the EPA to extend the drawdown time to 24 hours. So most of it'll be gone within six hours. And then the rest of it, we, we purposely create a staged outlet where we hold that water back and kind of try to trickle it out in order to settle out any pollutants or, or erosion that, that happens to get into that basin. And that's a requirement from EPA.
All right. Thank you. And this is John again. Will the, the bottom of the basin have any paved channels so there isn't any standing water?
No, with, it's actually not allowed to do that anymore. It was a much better setup. I completely agree with you, but the Hamilton County stormwater won't allow us to put a paved channel in a detention basin.
Okay. And this is John again. Additional question. For any pollutants that are in the water, is there any vegetative filtering that's going to be part of the basin or the discharge? Or is that all just in the holdback that you mentioned previously?
Well, the, the reason they don't allow the paved channel is because they want that water, especially in the lower volume rains, to be able to travel through a vegetative swale. And that will, that, that helps to get some of the pollutants out. So, so for the, for the small particle pollutants, the vegetation is about all there is. In a larger storm, a lot of the bigger pollutants settle out because of the, the, the water has a little depth to it and, and a little more time as it sits.
So Ms. Schlaudecker, is there any other questions that you have of the commission or the applicant that you could share with us?
No, I mean, I think I've, I've. No, I mean, I think I've, I'm disappointed. I, I, I feel like I've gone back and forth with Mr. Walker. I also have had engineers out here that have, that have plotted the, the property. It's three and a half acres. That back area of the property is Hamilton and Claremont County. About a half an acre, almost three quarters of an acre in Claremont. I've talked to them about the runoff issues and they've told me that those are concerns that have to be addressed with Metropolitan Sewer District. But they, they usually have developments put in their drainage before the development actually happens. But I haven't really got a lot of answers. Just not real happy with having a swamp land in the backyard. And that's all. I've put my, I just hope my questions go in the record. I just don't agree with it, period. I'd be okay with a detention area. And I don't agree that a detention and a retention are different. They, one holds water, one slowly holds water and releases it. But I just think it could be planned a little better as far as that goes.
Okay. Well, thank you. Your comments are on record. So I appreciate that. So this is John again. Is there anyone else that would like to speak? If you could, if you do, please state your name and address. Okay, with the long pause, I'm assuming that, you know, there's no more attendees that would like to speak. Is that correct? Silence is a yes.
This is Steve with Anderson Township, just moderating. I'm going to undo all the mics one more time for the record. So everyone can just bear with me. I'm going to undo the mics to make it clear that, and put in the record that all the mics have been unmuted. So folks can have the chance to chime in.
Thank you, Steve.
If you could ask that question maybe one more time and we'll.
Is there anyone else that'd like to speak concerning this application two dash 2020 Anderson? If so, please speak now. Okay, hearing no responses. We'll open up discussion amongst the commission members. So Mr. Lewis, like to start with you, please.
I think we've had a thorough review. I do have obviously some concerns as voiced by the residents nearby about the retention, detention. So I'd be interested to hear other commissioners' views.
All right. Thank you, Ms. McBride.
Yeah, I understand the, the neighbors' concerns about the stormwater management issues. But I do think that we need to have some faith and trust in the, in Hamilton County who actually will be the ones reviewing that. I, I am pleased that the applicant listened to us in February and our concerns about making sure that what we were reviewing is what was actually going to be constructed and, and changing the application to a zone change for the ACUP. I'm pleased about that. I do have some comments about the landscaping berm. I, I agree with staff that we need to have a mixture of non-deciduous trees. And I think that they need to get a, a more frequent, you know, like 20 to 25 feet on center and probably, and at least six feet in height to provide any kind of buffering. But I think those are pretty my comments right now.
Thank you, Ms. McBride. Mr. Ellis?
Thank you, Mr. Gothard. Yeah, I'd just like to note that the applicant for sure heard our comments at the last meeting. I appreciate that they did significantly change what they were asking for so that we now have some comfort level. That was the main focus of concern last time. What you see is what you get. So I think that's very positive and gives you a comfort level in approving this. As far as the stormwater runoff goes, I really appreciate Mrs. Slaunderker took this opportunity to voice her concerns because they're important, because stormwater always makes me nervous too. And I think Mr. Walker did a pretty good job. I heard him say he just designed a shallow basin. So the most important thing, I think as far as those things go is, is safety. So a shallow detention basin is going to be way superior than water that's in there all the time. So for sure, as this goes through the subdivision review process with the county, they're going to take a hard look at this and ensure that the stormwater runoff volumes and velocities are going to remain the same. And I think I noted last, at the last meeting, there's a lot of blacktop and stuff on that property right now. So more controlled design, I'm hopeful will be beneficial for the downstream receiving properties. So that's all the comments I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ellis. Mr. Henson?
Yeah, I want to echo the comments from Ms. McBride and Brian. And that, you know, the applicant has gone through the process, you know, starting all the way back with pre-application. And it seems as though they've been very responsive to feedback from both the community, the planning staff and the commission. And so that's much appreciated. I agree that what we asked for was some level of certainty and they've provided that. One, I think, open comment that, that I have is with regard to the stormwater mitigation that, you know, it is a pretty prime opportunity to do something a little bit more progressive in terms of bio swale and extensive landscaping that might become more of an asset to both the potential property owners of this project and the neighbors. And you know, I know that we have to go through Hamilton County and, and enter this properly to make sure that we do mitigate the runoff and reduce the runoff. But it does seem a, a good opportunity to do something a little level up beyond that and, and help make it a more marketable project and a more agreeable project for everybody involved. That's the extent of my comments. Thank you.
Thank you. I mean, I, I'd like to see as we go forward to the final development plan, maybe a little bit more information on the, the stormwater detention signage that was asked about by the neighboring residents. Who's going to maintain that detention basin? For, you know, the life of the development? And, you know, items like that. But I think the basics of the overall development plan are in line with what was discussed last month, or I'm sorry, February? And the improvements that we, that the commission saw. And I agree with, you know, the pre-development, all the meetings that went forward, listening to as many comments as possible and trying to incorporate those in. But I do believe, you know, a little bit more information as the plan develops on the detention would be beneficial for the commission and also the neighbors. So with that, would anyone on the commission have any other comments? Hearing no other comments, would someone like to make a motion concerning two dash 2020 Anderson?
Mr. Chair, if it's appropriate, I would propose a motion on zone change case two dash 2020 Anderson for the property at 3464 Mount Carmel Road. And that we recommend approval to the Board of Trustees to rezone the property as proposed, consistent with staff's findings that the proposed zone change is consistent with our comprehensive plan, is consistent with the recommendation from the Economic Development Committee, and also with the recommendations from the Anderson Trails Plan, as well as the following conditions that were recommended by staff. And I believe included in a revised preliminary plan, but that the sidewalk be installed along Mount Carmel Road frontage, that a variety of trees, and they should be non-deciduous trees, be planted on the berms rather than one species. That those plants would be a minimum of six feet in height and planted at a maximum of 20 feet on center. And that the label on lot seven be, be removed.
Thank you, Ms. McBride. Anyone like the second, please?
This is Brian. I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Ellis. Ms. Donovan, can you call a roll, please?
Mr. Henson?
Yes.
Mr. Ellis?
Yes.
Ms. McBride?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Gothard?
Yes. Well, thank you, everyone that attended. Next on the agenda is an election of officer, officers for the zoning commission for two 2020. So we will open that up to discussion amongst the commission members.
Sarah?
Yes.
Whomever, if the meeting is still open, we haven't adjourned yet. I did want to clarify earlier in the meeting on approval of minutes, I responded with a present instead of a yes. If you can please indicate that I did intend to vote yes instead of present for that.
Got it. Thank you.
I would like to suggest that since Mr. Gothard is doing such a bang up job as chair, that perhaps we would consider nominating him to continue that position in 2020. Pays great.
Thanks.
Second, second, third, fourth.
Fourth.
So great. I can stay at home for like a month and a half straight now. That would be acceptable to me. If that is acceptable to the commission.
You're doing a great job.
I would make the motion then that Mr. Gothard remain on as chair of the zoning commission.
We have a second for that unfortunate motion.
I'll second Ben.
Thank you.
Ms. Donovan, could you call a roll, please?
Mr. Henson?
Yes.
Mr. Ellis?
Yes.
Ms. McBride?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Gothard?
Staying. With that, Mr. Jury and Ms. Donovan, do we have any look forward to for the month of May?
Yeah, we do. But back to election of officers, did we decide on a vice chair?
Oh, I apologize. I forgot about.
That's all right.
I was just trying to get out of this, to be honest.
I know.
He could be vice chair as well.
Well, you know, this is, I've made this one on time. I was actually early. I mean, that's unheard of for me. So these online things are okay. So any discussion about vice chair, please, amongst the commission?
And Ben vice chair? This is Brian asking. I'm sorry, I don't know who's been the chair and vice chair. I, I think Jay's vice chair now, right?
Yeah.
Jay, do you have an interest in continuing on in that role?
I have neither an interest or disinterest.
Sounds like a nomination coming to me.
Well, with that, then I would most certainly move that Mr. Lewis be the vice chair for 2020.
I'll second.
Ms. Donovan, please call a roll.
Mr. Henson?
Yes.
Mr. Ellis?
Yes.
Ms. McBride?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis? Mr. Gothard?
Absolutely, yes.
Congratulations, gentlemen.
So Paul, what were you? What do we expect coming in?
Okay, so today was the deadline. Our May meeting actually has been moved up because of Memorial Day. So the meeting is May the 18th. So please mark it down. It's a week earlier than normal. We have one application that has been submitted and that's for a PUD for the park and ride development. The applicant is the Hills group. And this is the, for the redevelopment of the park and ride. The family in conjunction with the park and ride.
Paul, I'm going to give you a heads up now. I'm going to need to recuse myself on that. I'm actively doing work for Hills right now.
Okay, okay. Thank you. We'll check an alternate.
Do we have any inclination it's going to be a virtual meeting or a in-person zoning?
Not yet. We are going to see how it goes. I want to thank you all for being so user, for being flexible with this virtual meeting. I think it went very well. Thank you, even Sarah. It went even better with you all behind the reins because I couldn't have done it, that's for sure. So thanks to Steve and Sarah. We are taking it week by week. And we will let you know.
I would also listen. Go ahead, Ann.
No, I was just going to say thanks to the, to the staff for making this happen because it, it did go very well. The, the, the real odds is behind the curtain. Sarah and Steve, thank you so much for doing that.
Yeah, I would second. I think a big shout out to
Great job.
The staff here in Anderson Township.
Yeah, thank you all very much. I think it went much better than I think any of us probably actually anticipated. So with that, a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
I will second that myself. So all in favor? I?
I.
All opposed. Well, thank you all very much. Have a good rest of your evening.
Thank you.
Thank you all.